You want me to carry on?
Hold on a second.
Yeah, give me about-
Are we good, Les, or we-
Give me about 30 seconds and that will be live.
No problem.
Do I need a second?
Tell me when. Yeah, we'll start.
Okay.
We're live.
We're live.
Okay, we're gonna restart, start over now that we're live on social media. We're gonna call to order the meeting of the Jeffersonville Common Council Special Meeting for May the 6th. We'll go ahead and start with a roll call, please.
Counselperson White.
Present.
Counselperson Burns.
Present.
Counselperson Paris.
Here.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Here.
Counselperson Cross.
Here.
Counselperson Webb.
Present.
Counsel President Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Here.
Counselperson Ellis.
Here.
Let the record reflect that we do have seven councils joined via phone and we do have two present, Counselperson Cross and Counsel President Owen.
All right, we're not going to worry about approving minutes. Let's go ahead and approve the agenda. I think there is one addition that was requested. Mr. White has an additional appropriation request that we're gonna put under new business on number 13. If I can have a motion to-
The additional appropriations should be in your packet. Additional should be-
I'm sorry, it's the resolution to go along with that additional appropriation, which will be Resolution 5 that we'll also put on number 13 under new business if there's a motion to do that.
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
I'll second. So there's a motion and a second to, I think, Bill, you said to amend the agenda, right?
To approve the amended agenda, yes.
I have to, we'll have to have a motion to amend the agenda first, two separate motions.
I make a motion to amend the agenda.
Mr. Cross seconded. Okay, so a motion by Mr. Burns, second by Mr. Cross to amend the agenda to include number 13 under new business, the resolution regarding emergency housing. We'll have a roll call vote, this will need to be unanimous to approve.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Cross.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Yes.
Nine zero.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously, now do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
It's amended.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maple, second, Mr. White, roll call, please.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Cross.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Yes.
Nine zero, President Owen.
Okay, so that's unanimous. Just to remind anybody who may be watching on social media and our guests who are with us tonight, we have to do all of our voice votes by roll call. That's a caveat to being able to do this virtually. Also, I keep forgetting to mention, even though we are streaming live on social media, we actually can't see any of the comments that are posted to social media in regards to the video as they are being posted. So we'll have to go back and read those after the fact. We do not have any minutes to approve, we don't have any claims to approve, report to the clerk.
No, tonight.
No, report to the clerk. Unfinished business, okay, we have 2020 OR 23 ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department. Heather, were there any changes to this?
No, there are no changes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maple, second, Mr. White, Ms. Gil.
To be clear, it's on a third and final reading.
This is the third and final reading, yes.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Cross.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Yes.
Nine zero.
Okay, under new business, we have Larry Wilder presenting the agreement between the City of Jeffersonville and the Jeffersonville Firefighters Local 558. Mr. Wilder?
Yes, sir. So I had an opportunity to review the, and can everyone hear me okay? Okay, so I had an opportunity to review the contract as presented and the language seems to be obviously legal in form. And I think probably the most important issue for you as a council to understand and know is first and foremost, the financial piece of the contract does not include any increases from the old contract. However, there is language that allows the opportunity to renegotiate and reconsider the financial obligation that the city would have in 2021. And I think that's clearly and obviously an acknowledgement by that, the Division of Public Safety, that we are going to be going into uncharted waters shortly as it relates to what kind of income there will be from the, from the tax revenue. And again, I will always say, and I continue to say, and Mr. Merkley always hears me say this, I must advise you that in the larger scheme of things, the council's only obligation in negotiations involving anything involving employment is to deal with the finances. And all of the other provisions that are not provisions involving spending money are provisions that if the mayor chooses not to sign this agreement, you cannot bind the city to. So, and I just always, that's just a statement of law I always make. Is that, do you feel like that's an accurate statement, Mr. Merkley?
Yes.
So with that said-
Merkley shortened concise.
-for you all to consider entering into an agreement where you're spending no more money.
Was there anybody on the negotiation wanted to speak to this?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in real quick. I want to give a thank you to the local firefighters. This was a very easy decision for me and I think on the team's part, and they can speak for themselves here in a second. We have no idea what is unfolding before us. And for them to recognize that fact, I think speaks highly of them. And they understand the problems that may arise. And I'll be more than happy with that union and others that we have to deal with and employees. Once this is passed, to be able, if you want to look at it as retroactively, retroactively look at their pay, we'll be able to do that. But I think this was very prudent on our part to pursue this. And I'd really like to say thanks to them for, for kind of presenting it in such a way as to kind of, we can just kind of wait and see attitude. So that's my two cents worth.
I would chime in-
Is there anybody else from the-
I would agree with that and commend Joe Hurt and the fire union for being, for acknowledging that we're in unprecedented times and keeping things as they are until next April, when we're able to assess our financial situation and then enter into good faith negotiations.
I echo some thoughts that I think that White had. I do applaud and thank the fire union for being proactive and recognizing what's happening and, you know, in these uncharted times and stepping up.
I concur, they pretty much said it all, but that was really a good thing that they did to waive all financial help so we could get through this situation we're going through. That's all I got.
Any other comments from other members? I would just say that this is another example of our firefighters providing service to the, to the city and being understanding that we are going through some uncertainty with the, what the financials would look like in the city and their willingness to step up and say, hey, we need to get this contract settled because it expires at the end of the year. But we're comfortable moving forward without knowing, you know, that they'll have that, those raises in place. I certainly feel, everybody agrees that we will work towards readdressing that once we have some better footing financially as a city. But we appreciate those men and women who work for the fire department who've agreed to put this forward. So with that, unless there's any other comments, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we have put in on the first and the second reading.
Second. Is this a one and done, Larry?
Sir. And so you all know, so now it obviously goes to the mayor and based on what I think I interprets from Les's statements and comments, the mayor keeps track, then it becomes a meeting agreement.
So there's a motion and a second to approve this as presented. We'll take a roll call vote.
Counselperson White. Counselperson White.
Sorry, aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counsel Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Cross.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counsel President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Thank you all very much. Next on the agenda, we have Heather McAfee, an additional appropriation.
And which one do you want to take first?
The first one is going to be out of the rainy day fund for Jeffersonville Sustains COVID-19. This is an additional appropriation in the amount of $258,000 and, I'm sorry, $258,750. And this is going to fund the Jeffersonville Sustains Small Business Forgivable Loan Program in conjunction with One Southern Indiana. Heather, did you have anything to add?
No, I have nothing to add.
Heather, I do have a question. What will that leave, what will that leave the rainy day fund balance?
Give me two seconds and I'll let-
It's right at $4 million, I think.
Sorry, I wasn't ready for that one.
Sorry. A little busy today.
Heather, while you're looking for that number, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce Wendy Dantchesser, who is here with us from One Southern Indiana. She has worked with a couple of us and her team on putting together this Jeffersonville Sustains project. It's a forgivable loan program and I'll turn it over to Wendy to kind of explain how we got to this point.
Thank you, Councilman Owen, or Chairman, this Chairman Owen. And for the rest of the council, thanks for entertaining this. I, this is the first public meeting I've participated in on Zoom and you guys are making it look easy. So thanks for sticking through this. Back about seven or eight, it almost feels like years ago, but it was really maybe seven or eight weeks ago, when, when this crisis was just really starting to emerge, we knew that there would be significant economic impact and economic contraction in the market. It wasn't until the actual stay-at-home order was issued and we had a clearer picture of which types of businesses would be most affected by this, that we, that that picture became into a better focus. And it wasn't pretty. So what the organization did, let me backtrack, is as the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Organization for Clark and Floyd Counties, One Southern Indiana had been participating for at least the seven and a half years I've been here as an administrator with what was the Horseshoe Foundation, is now the Caesars Foundation of Floyd County, to administer a revolving loan fund. It's very similar and has been operated very similarly to the Jeffersonville Fund that you all manage. And so what we had, what we did was look for an opportunity to work with our Community Foundation of Southern Indiana, the Caesars Foundation Board, and, and find some funding to put together an emergency forgivable loan program. We started with $30,000 that we had in restricted funds from the OSI Foundation and tested the theory that the mechanism would work, that we could make forgivable loans to small businesses in this emergency situation. That program started, as I mentioned, with $30,000. By the end of the program, we had raised about $426,000 and were able to assist a total of 44 businesses throughout Clark and Floyd Counties. Now, certain jurisdictions put dollars in and they said that those dollars would be available for their jurisdiction. For instance, town of Sellersburg, I think Charlie's on, town of Sellersburg did put some money in and then they were able to just use, we were able to use those dollars and allocate those to businesses in the town of Sellersburg. That was, was successful, but it, the money ran out very quickly. $426,000 helped 44 businesses, that was great. However, there was a donor that came forth and said, there's more that we could be doing. And they put together what we call our second loan product, which was a zero-interest loan program. And that one was geared towards culturally significant businesses. Those businesses that give Southern Indiana the flair that we have. So the restaurants, the bars, the entertainment venues, the arts, the museums, those type of venues. And that program was, was intended to be a little different in that it was a zero-interest loan, not forgivable. And it would provide an opportunity for businesses to borrow up to 25,000. Now, most of the businesses that were applying at that time, some of them, I would say most, some were also applying through their banks for the Paycheck Protection Program that was part of the U.S. Cares Act. So the PPP program. And we did have about three businesses that while they were in application for that program, they received notification they were gonna get a PPP and they all self, they all withdrew. They didn't want the debt on both sides. So the local money went to those businesses that were not able to, to obtain the PPP money. We ended up total, in total raising $550,000 for 31 businesses. The majority of that money came from the Caesars Foundation and another, I'm sorry, the majority of it came from the Blue Sky Foundation, which was for Clark and Floyd Counties. And the remaining dollars came from a combination of Floyd County or the Caesars Foundation for Floyd County businesses. So in conversations with a couple of your council members, the question was, what would Jeffersonville want to see if a third loan product came along? And because you're not in Floyd County, we're not able to run the dollars through the Caesars Foundation and that's okay, it still fits under our mission. We had the, the legal checking of that as well as through our auditing firm, Rota Famas. Where, as our organization is a 501(c)(6), we can accept these dollars and run the loan program ourselves. And that gave us some flexibility in coming back to the city council members and saying, what is it that you would want done with the program? So I'm gonna ask at this point, that's sort of the history, Lisa Brooking is also on it. And Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'd like to ask Lisa to go over some of the stipulations of the program as it has been negotiated. Is that appropriate, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, Lisa, if you would.
So you want to go over the, the program that we're going to put together for Jeff? The Jeff's estate?
I think the council-
Yes.
Yeah, the council has the proposal in front of them. And we've gone through over the last couple of days, some of the, some of the stipulations of what we've done here for Jeffersonville, that a lot came from your program. Lisa, if you would, just give us a little bit of an idea, how many businesses in Jeffersonville have you been able to help through your existing programs that you've already administered? And what, give us an idea of the number of applications that you saw that you couldn't get to because of the lack of funding.
Okay, so we have loaned to 15 businesses in Jeffersonville, which is a total of $179,700. $76,000 of that was in the first round with the COVID-19 forgivable loans. The remaining $103,000 was in the second round of the community and cultural relief. In the first round, we loaned to 45 businesses, but we saw 145 applications. In the second loan, in the community and cultural relief loan, the first round was approved last week and we approved 21 so far. We have 14 going to committee in the morning. Now, that loan is a little bit different than the first one. The first one was really triage. This one is lending, so there was a little bit more requirements. And so there were a few of those people that did deny, just based on not being able to submit a complete application and things like that. So we've all in seen well over 200 applications.
And I know the council members have seen this, this proposal. Just for sake of the public, though, I will mention, we decided that while we were talking back and forth with One Southern Indiana, that we wanted to make this a $5,000 forgivable loan program, a maximum of $5,000 per application, so that we could take what money we could put into something like this and spread it out as much as possible. Eligible businesses for this program would have to be small, forward-facing public businesses, sit-down restaurants, bars, entertainment venues, boutiques, retail and salons, businesses operating in the City of Jeffersonville and operating with less than 50 full-time employees. Not eligible are going to be businesses that receive funds from that initial program, forgivable loan program in March of 2020. Businesses with established drive-through services as a part of their normal operation, businesses with more than full-time, 50 full-time employees, businesses outside the city, and then also businesses owned or in partnership agreements with members of the Jeff City Council. We set up the review committee with appointments from One Southern Indiana and from the city. We'll need to discuss that here in just a minute. And then also, I wanted to add also what is not on the document that went out to the council members. The amount we have come up with is $250,000, which is what's on the additional appropriation. We decided that we would work on sending that to One Southern Indiana for dispersment in different segments. The first initial contribution would be $100,000. And then as seen by the volume of applications, of eligible applications, we would send the additional dollars in $50,000 increments, which I'll process those claims through the clerk's office and through the controller's office. But altogether, maxed out for the city's contribution, $250,000 out of our rainy day fund, which is gonna bring our rainy day fund down to, I think, just under $4 million. Heather, did you find that number?
Yes, the number would be just under $3.9 million. And, and like you all have said too, just a caution on knowing that revenues are, are very much of an unknown at this point, yes.
Heather, when, when do we normally get our spring dispersment?
In June, it will come in June. But because the-
Come in June.
Right, the, the due date for property taxes was still May 10th or May 11th. But the penalty was pushed back. That's the only thing that was pushed back. So the dispersment should still be at the same time period.
I mean, are you, are you comfortable with, with taking 250 out of the rainy day fund for this? I mean, considering we don't know what our dispersment's gonna be, I mean, we, we think it's gonna be low, we don't know.
Right.
I guess it's all speculation.
I'm sure, I'm sure that it will be low, yes.
So I mean, I mean, what are your thoughts as chief?
It concerns me with any kind of spending at this point in time. Cause our revenues are very unknown.
Mr. Merkley, I think, to your point. I think to your point, we have discussed at length that we are expecting to see shortfalls hit the city in waves. Initially, we've already lost out on some money for the river stage from tourism because tourism, hotel rates are down right now. The next wave that's gonna hit us financially as a city is property taxes. There will definitely probably be a delay in property tax collection because of the waived requirements, waived fines for, or late penalties. I know that the, there is an opportunity for the county to give us an extra dispersment in August if they choose to do so, for any of those payments that come in late. I don't know if Clark County has agreed to do that, but that's certainly an option for them if they, if see a lot of those late payments come in over the summer. And then additionally, we're gonna see some deferred payments in income tax, obviously, over the next two years. So I don't think there's any disillusion that we're not gonna have some problems financially with our revenue as a city. But what we do expect is that $4 million in our rainy day funds, $7 million in our general fund and the remaining additional fund balances across our city funds, which are all, are all healthy with little exception, will get us through as we encounter each wave in this process. Now, one thing that we did say, though, in this group of us that we're working on putting this together, is that we understand $5,000 may not make or break somebody in saving their business. But this $5,000 with the $3,000 from the Main Street program or money from the PPP program or money from some of the other grant opportunities that have been afforded could help make the difference. And we didn't want to see, we didn't want to come out of this pandemic and see a business close their doors for good and never pay property tax again without having known that $5,000 could have made the difference for them. That was not something that we were willing to go down this path and have that in the back of our mind if we saw somebody close their doors. We felt that it was our obligation to at least do what we could to try to mitigate the damage that this pandemic brought to the City of Jeffersonville. And I can say, as a third-term councilman, I appreciate everything that the city has done over the last eight or nine years to bring us to where we are. But we've gotta, we've gotta protect that investment and this is the best way that we felt we could do that. And we wanted to put that out to the rest of the council for their consideration. I appreciate the administration also applied for some grant funding through the state for something similar. There were a little bit, there was a little bit more red tape with that program. Unfortunately, we did not receive that funding. Had that been the case, that would have been fantastic for small businesses in Jeffersonville. But hopefully this can help mitigate that missed opportunity from that. Does anybody have any questions? Any of our council members have any questions for the One Southern Indiana team? Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions, um, regarding the, the outline, uh, for the Jeffersonville sustains program that One Southern Indiana worked with us to put together? Hearing none? If there is any type of motion or comment?
Matt, I, I would just convey, I just, you know, I think you sent out an email a week or so ago, which I thought was very, um, thoughtful and insightful, uh, in, as we move forward, uh, in light of this pandemic and how it may impact the city's finances, because we're not just looking at property taxes for this year, but we're looking at next year and then income tax as well, which were, which will lag behind the property taxes. And I think we've had some council members involved in department head meetings, uh, where the mayor has been very stern with departments, uh, to restrain in their spending. Obviously, our number one goal in this, with the city is to ensure that essential city services are not interrupted. And obviously, we, we don't want that to happen for lack of funding. You know, we're looking, we want to avoid other government, other communities are furloughing employees off. We, we don't want that to happen. But, you know, the, I can tell you right now, you know, I'm putting together twenty budgets, this upcoming budget for next year is going to be a real challenge, and it looks like we've got a lot of money in rainy day fund today. But this is not over, and we're going to continue to go through, through this crisis. And I would just caution the council that if, if you expect the administration to tell the departments to be restraint in their spending and then to appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the rainy day fund, you know, that's going to be a, a tough sell. And I, Larry would concur to me, we've, we've been through the lean times with the city where there was no money, and I, I think you need to be prepared for that going forward. Those are just.
And I appreciate that, that word of caution. We've echoed, I'm sure that our department heads, uh, think we sound like a broken record when we say we must restrain our spending, we must, uh, be cautious of the budget because we don't know what's coming. I would, I would add that, you know, with eleven million dollars in reserves and rainy day funding, hopefully, a quarter of a million dollars won't, won't break us. But it is important for us to be prudent with our spending, and I think that the department's heads have, uh, have started to get a good handle on that with repeated reminders from the council and repeated reminders from the mayor. And I appreciate that from him especially. Again, this is going to be an initiative used to protect the investment that our small businesses have made in Jeffersonville, um, so they can pay those property. And we don't see a, a long-term gap more so than, uh, what we're going to see in just a late spending. At least that, that was our take on it. I certainly understand that you guys want us to be abundantly cautious, and I think that we're going to continue to do that. And we're not going to see, uh, city services or any types of, uh, the furloughs that you've seen in other places. Was there any comment or anything else from any of the other council members?
Matt, if I may, um, I'd like to, uh, express, uh, my gratitude and thank, uh, Ms., uh, Dan Chester in her efforts on this and addressing the concerns of small businesses in Southern Indiana and especially Jeffersonville. Your work is very much appreciated, and we thank you for, uh, working with us to be able to come to this point where we can do our part to, uh, help sustain the businesses that we've worked so hard to, uh, attract and, and patronize in the city of Jeffersonville. And Matt, uh, you, uh, in your role as president, um, have really taken the lead on this, uh, with Wendy, and I appreciate the work you've done, uh, the attention to details that you've, uh, given to this and to make sure that, uh, we're doing the right thing to do the, what, the best that we can with what we have, um, to support our businesses. I think this is the right move. Uh, I think it's, uh, good for, for Jeffersonville. It's good to show that we are here for those who have, um, paid their taxes over the years to allow us to, um, do all the, the good things that we've been doing, and now it's time for us to give some of that money back to help them through this tough time. And that's my perspective, so thank you very much.
Matt, if I may, I'd like to elaborate on Dustin's comment. You know, the small businesses, they've been devastated around here, and if we could just save one or two businesses, I mean, and keep them where they're paying taxes, it's going to help the city. I know we're all looking for budgets, but if, if we don't have businesses here, then we, we don't have the employment here, then we don't have the tax dollars here. I think it's a good move, and thank you for putting this proposal forward.
Matt? I will add one thing. I just want to add one thing. Um, this is not meant to be seen as any type of small business handout either. And I know that, um, folks who may be watching on social media can't, don't see the project outline, but, um, you know, these businesses are going to be required to submit financials to an over, a review board. These funds are supposed to be utilized for overhead expenses so that they can pay the mortgage, pay the rent bill, uh, pay the light bill, so that as we go through this reopening that the governor has outlined, uh, these businesses and these employees have somewhere to come back to. Uh, we've already seen May first come where business owners have had to pay rent without any relevant revenue coming in. Uh, we don't, I don't want to see that for, uh, June first if we can do something to stop it. Mr. Maples, did you have something yet?
Yeah, you, you know, my point, uh, I, I work closely with Matt on this too. It's, um, the point of this project was basically to keep the lights on so that barber shops and beauty salons, florists, other local businesses can at least try to get a fighting chance to continue when they're allowed to open. So that was the goal. It's not a blanket amount of money if you apply. You have to show your, your lease, your utilities, and that will be reviewed. It's very responsible, uh, the way we're going to be divvying up money, uh, and I'm proud to be a part of it.
If there's nothing else, um, I'll entertain a motion, and, uh, before I do, though, uh, if we want to get this going now that this is kind of public, that this is what we've put together, uh, and suspend the rules to approve the appropriation, uh, we could do that, but I'll put that out there for the council's consideration.
Everybody's okay with that? I move to suspend the rules, uh, in order to pass this ordinance?
I will not suspend the rules. Yeah, I'll know my feeling on that.
Okay. That does have to be unanimous decision, and, uh, and we can certainly respect that run. If we, uh, need to do this one step at a time, we can, um, schedule for another special meeting and, and get that done, um, on Friday. That's not a problem. This is, um, ordinance twenty twenty, OR twenty-four. If there's a motion to approve on the first or the first and second reading?
Motion to approve on the first and second reading?
I'll second.
I'll second. The motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Croft. Ms. Gill, if you would, on the first and second reading?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Paris?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Council President Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Nine zero.
Okay. We'll move on. Uh, the second ordinance of additional appropriation, um, as soon as I can pull it up here. Excuse me. Uh, this is an, uh, out of the rainy day fund also Clark, for Clark County Health Department in their response to COVID-19. And we have, um, the Clark County Health Officer, I believe, with us, Dr. Eric Yezel. Welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
This, uh, ordinance is brought to us, uh, at the request of Councilman White. And, Mr. White, if you want to go ahead?
Thank you. This is, uh, you know, I gave some, uh, comments, uh, on Monday night's meeting regarding the tents that are set up, uh, in Clayesburg at the Catalyst Rescue Mission. This was, uh, in an order was issued by the County Health Department, uh, due to the pandemic, um, as a precautionary measure, and I'll let the doctor explain more what that's about. But we wanted to make sure that, uh, we had a plan in place to, uh, make sure the homeless were protected. There is a memorandum of understanding between Catalyst Rescue Mission and, uh, the Red Carpet Inn. So, uh, the idea is to, uh, appropriate ten thousand dollars, uh, to enable those who are staying in tents, uh, to, uh, not have to stay there. And I believe with my discussions with Dr. Yezel, I believe it would be if we had walk-up, homeless, uh, they would be screened for symptoms of COVID-19. Um, if they did not have any symptoms, then they would be entered into the shelter. Um, if they did have symptoms, then we would get them into, um, we would get them tested, uh, as well as get them into the hotel, uh, pending the results of the test. If the tests were negative, then they would be released to go back to the shelter or wherever they chose. Um, if they were, uh, if the results were positive, then they would be quarantined in the hotel. This would eliminate the need for tents to be placed, uh, for people staying in tents, um, and would, uh, comply with the CDC standards on how to address this situation. It's also my understanding, it's not a guarantee, but that Dr. Yezel will, uh, see if we would be able to qualify for reimbursement of these funds, uh, or any funds that were expended for this purpose.
Yeah, I think, uh, it might be beneficial if I kind of give you a brief, kind of how we got to this point, and, um, just to have you kind of understand the basics of how the, uh, the shelter works is there's two separate populations. There's the population that resides there day in, day out, and then they have a significant enough, uh, number of walk-up populations. And the walk-up population provides, uh, it's a logistical difficulty. And basically, in the current setup without the tents, you have two choices. Number one, potentially have somebody with COVID-19 come into the shelter proper, which is a major risk. That's how you get, you know, sixty or seventy people under one roof that are COVID-positive. The other alternative is to turn them away, and then they're out in the community at large, again, with, with, uh, you know, potential COVID-19. So that was where the tent came in the first place is as a place to kind of transition potential patients into the shelter or into an alternative situation. And that, in lieu of that, we've been working on the gold standard, which is hotel rooms for these, uh, you know, for people in this situation. And I want to be clear about the order from Monday night. That's, that's what my position on this is, and the Health Department's position is, you know, we want to make sure that those tents don't come down without a viable alternative. If we can make the hotel situation happen, you know, the, I am of the same position as I think a majority of, of you are, is that we want those down, you know, right away as well, and we'll certainly facilitate that.
Just want to add, in case there was any question, um, the claims process would be, uh, once the Health Department verified that, uh, persons did in fact stay in the hotel, they would submit the claim to the city clerk, would review it, um, and then pay it, um, and then pay it once it's, once, uh, it's reviewed and found to be, uh, appropriate.
Dr. Yezel would, would, assuming this happens, and hopefully it will, but will there still be a tent there? And if, if so, what transpires in the tent?
Uh, I'm of the opinion that as the minute the hotel option is viable, um, that there is no further indication for tents. And just to, one other thing, um, just to kind of echo what, uh, um, uh, what Councilman White said, we have a grant that we're waiting for funding for that seems consistent with this same appropriation we're talking about. Obviously, I have no control over if they'll okay this, but I do intend to ask for funding from the grant to reimburse these funds. Obviously, I can't promise anything, but I can promise we will certainly ask for that.
So, so is it safe to say that assuming this all happens, you'll rescind your order or, or not renew your order from the tents?
That's correct.
Are there any other council members who have questions, either for Mr. White or Dr. Yezel? Before we, uh, entertain a motion, I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Yezel for, uh, his service to the community through the Health Department. Thank you to your entire Health Department team. I know you've got a lot going, and we appreciate you being here to, to speak on this, on this matter.
Well, thank you, and thank you for all you guys are doing for the, the city of Jeffersonville as well. I appreciate all of you.
Um, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Ron, um, are we still with not suspending the rules? If, if so, we'll just pass, I'll, I'll make a motion to pass it on the first and second, and then we can bring it up again at the Friday special meeting.
I would sup, I would support the first and second, Dustin.
Okay, now move that we passed, um, this appropriation on the first and second reading?
And I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. White for the first and second reading, second by Mr. Ellis. Anything further? Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Paris?
Mr. Paris, you're muted. You're still muted.
You're muted, Joe. Maybe, maybe Mac can unmute you. Mac, can you unmute Joe? There you go. There you go.
I, I voted nay.
Is that nay?
Yes, nay.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Council President Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Eight to one.
All right. Um, the next on the agenda is number thirteen, um, twenty twenty R five is the resolution that will go with this, uh, funding for emergency housing. And it's lays out basically the process for, uh, getting that approved and the process for the claims to go. There was a resolution emailed out to you. It was, or I do have a proposed change, um, just on the second page, it says, uh, the process and procedure for requesting funds from the COVID-19 response appropriation. Uh, it just basically outlines that that will run through the city clerk's office to the controller, uh, not directly to the controller. So the Health Department will submit that to the clerk's office, and then she will process that claim. And then the controller will have the authority to, uh, pay that claim, uh, as it comes in, and then we can approve it retroactively. I know that the, the city clerk has spoken with the Health Department, and they are all understanding how that process will work. And, uh, as, as long as everybody's okay with that, I think we need to have a motion to amend the resolution to include that language.
So moved?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to amend twenty twenty R five to include the language that outlines the process with the city clerk and the Health Department. All those in, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Paris?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Council President Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Nine zero.
Okay. And a motion to approve then, R5?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. White, second, Mr. Ellis.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Paris?
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis?
Aye.
Nine zero.
All right. It is just before 6:30. Can we, Mr. Wilder, go ahead and notice for a special meeting on Friday at 6:30? Or have you done that?
Brag about how effective I am because I did that right back when you said something about 6:05. So Lisa, Lisa, you're going to mail a notice of a special meeting and the newspapers have been sent notice of a special meeting, 6:30 Friday. Did you hear me? Hear me?
Yes. Is there any other attorney comment, Mr. Wilder?
Thank you. And just, you know, the whole thing I want to emphasize again is under the circumstances, considering the actions you all are taking are in response to a pandemic, a worldwide unprecedented situation, circumstance, I feel very confident that if we get to a place where we have to defend decisions made, so long as we can point to the public need, the public good, the public safety and the public health, that we will be able to support and prevail on, on our, to do things that are a little out of character for what the statute say we have to do relative to notices and meetings.
Mr. Merkley, anything to add?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Metcalf, do you have anything for a department head report?
No, we're all good here. Thank you.
Thank you for all of your help through this week and through this whole ordeal. Council comments, Mr. White?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Yezel and the health department for working with me on this and sorting this out. He's dealing with the entire county and, and an ER doctor and everything else that he's got going on. But he took the time out to work with me to, to figure out how to get this done and to be able to have a plan that's according to CDC guidelines and best for the community. I'd like to thank Ms. Lindley, who's also on the call, for reaching out to Ms. Gill to discuss the claims process, to make sure that goes smoothly. So I, and I also want to thank each and every one of you for working with me to get this done. I think we're doing the right thing to make sure that people are, are, are in a humane situation and safe from the pandemic situation. So thanks to everyone involved with this for the work that you've done and for your support. I appreciate it.
Mr. Burns?
No comment this time.
Mr. Paris?
I just wanted to comment on, on the, the Catalyst Rescue Mission. I felt like Pastor Moon is involved here and, and should be heard. And I know he, he just put out a written statement just late today. And so I, you know, that's, I want the best for the situation. And I just felt like his, you know, his comments, either he should have been in, in our meeting involved or his comments, you know, should be looked at. So that's all I have.
Mr. Maples?
Just thank to Doc Yezel and his crew. I know how many times I've bothered him at the sheriff's office. So I know he's getting stretched thin. They're doing a great job. Thanks to the firefighters for coming up with their own idea to forego raises for the betterment of the city. That's a big picture idea. And we need a lot of that right now. And thanks to everyone.
Mr. Croft?
I just want to thank everybody for coming together during this trying time. It shows the metal. It's all about.
Mr. Webb?
I'd like to thank the firefighters. I think it's outstanding that they decided to put everything off. I think that needs to be publicly known. I'd like to thank Matt for y'all putting those committee together on the small businesses, helping small businesses out in this uncertain times. And Mr. White, Dr. Yezel, I think y'all put a good plan together with the homeless shelters. Thank you.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, I, I would like to thank Dr. Yezel and Mr. White for what you've done and for coming up with this plan. And I'd also like to explain to those that don't understand why I've stopped things from going on three readings. Often when we pass something on three readings, we may find out later that we didn't support it or that there was a mistake made and we wouldn't have a chance to, to correct it at that point. By me saying no to three readings doesn't mean that I don't support something. It just means that I want to take a little additional time to have a look at it and for all of us to be able to look at it and change our minds if that comes to be. So, but I, I thank all that worked on this plan. And I also thank Wendy Dan Chester for coming and explaining what this was going to concern. So thank you, everybody.
Mr. Hawkins?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. I saw come through. We have to do the meeting late on Friday because we did have to notice 48 hours in advance for a closed meeting. I guess there's also some tapping hurt on, on somebody's end. I think that might be our end. We're typing minutes as we go. And I think maybe that's what we're hearing. So we'll work on getting that taken care of in the future. Thank you, Dr. Yezel, Ms. Lindley from the health department, for being here to, to walk us through this and for working with the city on, on getting this issue mitigated. Also, thank you to One Southern Indiana for their help and to our firefighters who have taken it upon themselves to be of a different type of service to the city when we need it. So if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples, and second by Mr. White, and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. See you Friday.